Great. Welcome to Santaquin City Council's regular meeting. Glad to have you here in attendance, as well as live on Zoom or whatever it is.
YouTube.
Yeah, YouTube. So, we're gonna start the meeting tonight with a roll call. It looks like everybody's here, so we won't do the full roll call. We'll just assume since they're here, they're here. I would like to ask if someone would like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I will, Mayor.
Ron's got it.
Please stand.
Who's got it? Ron, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask if someone would lead us in an inspirational thought or offer an invocation.
Mayor, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to assemble as a city council. We're mindful of our responsibilities to our job and to also to the citizens we represent. We invoke thy spirit to be here with us now as we meet that we might make correct decisions for the betterment of all. We'll give thee thanks for the blessings that we enjoy in life, especially for thy son. And we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Art. Councilman Adcock, sorry. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have five items. The city council meetings of September the 6th and the work session meeting minutes of that same evening. Also, the bills, the city expenditures from the 15th to the 30th of September. An item about the police department's out-of-state training that they had asked. And resolutions on the surplus property which was posted. So, since those are on the consent agenda, are there any items of question or anything that you would like to go over in items one through five?
In the work session minutes, I noticed what I believed to be an error, and I spoke with Emily about it, and it's been corrected.
Spelling?
No, wrong word.
Oh, okay. Anything else? The numbers in the city expenditures? Any questions? Looks good to me when it's only that much. And we're only, and we're only talking 600,000. I know. Police department in-out-of-state training, are there any questions for that? Okay. And then, resolution on the surplus property. I think that was just one vehicle, wasn't it?
Two, two truck shells is all it is.
Just the shells, yeah. Yeah, okay. If there are no questions or no comments, then I'd ask for a motion to accept in a consent agenda those five items.
So moved.
We've had a motion. Do I have a second?
All second.
Motion and second. So, roll call, Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Passes. Public forum. And the first item that comes up on our public forum for tonight is Employee of the Month. Officer Hoosier, it's good to see you here, but the chief's gonna take over for a minute. Yeah, that's how he should do it, too.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for giving us a few minutes. On the October 2022 Employee of the Month is Bill Hoosier. It is an honor to recognize Bill Hoosier as the October Employee of the Month. Bill has been with the Santaquin City Police Department for the past five years. He started his law enforcement career in New Mexico in 2015 with the San Juan County Sheriff's Office. Obviously, in 2017, he had the opportunity to come to work for us. After passing the post physical agility and written exams, he started with our department and hasn't looked back since. He has enjoyed working in a smaller agency compared to the very large agency of over 200 officers in New Mexico. Bill was raised in Utah and has been married to his sweetheart of 27 years. He has two daughters, both whom are in nursing school. In his free time, he enjoys golfing, camping, and outdoor recreation. When asked what he really enjoys about his work, he stated he loves making a difference in people's lives. He has really enjoyed his assignment as an investigator because he is able to see the end results after putting in the work. He loves being over the internship program for the high school students with our Santaquin Academy. The employee has evolved into something that includes everyone from the department, and then it reaches beyond by including every aspect of law enforcement, from the 911 call to the court appearance. The entire department takes pride in this academy, and Bill feels privileged to be a part of it. I appreciate Penny doing the research and writing that up, but that's not the reason I submitted Bill's name for Employee of the Month. I submitted Bill, I submitted Corporal Hoosier's name because of his work performance. About a year ago, Corporal Hoosier was moved into investigations. During the last nine or 10 months, Corporal Hoosier has worked many investigations, some of which include felony fraud, child sexual abuse, exploitation of a minor, physical child abuse. And he was lucky and got a cold case rate investigation that we started in 2010. In addition to, in addition to taking on the high school internship program, most of these investigations are sensitive and they're complex, and they require a certain degree of tenacity or pride to ensure the victims have a voice. Several of these defendants are still incarcerated to this day, months after their arrest, which is almost unheard of in today's political climate. Corporal Hoosier's work performance over the duration of the last year is why he stands before you tonight. And that is all I have for you.
Speech. State your name, though, Phil.
I didn't come prepared with a, with a speech, but I just wanna say that, you know, what I, what I do for the police department wouldn't be possible without the support that we have from, from the city council, mayor, our administration, and the chief here. He's, he's given me a lot of responsibility. I'll take that lightly. I wanna represent the citizens here, and especially with these types of crimes, it's, you know, they need to have somebody fight for them. Whatever happened to them, you know, they didn't ask for that. And they deserve our very best all the time. So, happy to be here today. I feel like I'm just doing my job. I appreciate the recognition out of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think that is Manly.
What is it?
It was black, so.
Yeah.
Didn't look like a bookcase flowers, anyway.
Yeah, it's not a big basket.
That's the last person he's gonna nominate.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get a picture.
Knowing firsthand, I'd just like to thank, Bill, I'd like to thank your wife for putting up your schedule. I know firsthand.
We just love having you here instead of being in New Mexico or something. It's a, it's a good thing. Thank you. Thanks for everything you do. There's one other thing I would like to do in this public forum awards kind of thing is, the other night, I got to spend a couple of hours and saw the, these young ladies perform, talk, do some fun things. So Shelby, are, would you like to introduce them? I can, I can say their names, you know, Ally and Mary and, maybe I can't. Arzadia?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was so fun, and I gotta tell you one thing. I sat there and picked them, so. And I thought, huh, I didn't even talk to the judges, but I had to pick. So, this is the queen of Santaquin. I just love the thought that you guys did so well the other night. So Shelby, do you wanna introduce them?
Yeah.
The, the council that was not able to be there the other night, three or four of us were, and. Yes, and then, and then, girls, ladies, just prepare something like, say a little bit about what you want to do over the next year, okay?
Thinking, I'll give you a second.
That'll be a little preparation.
Okay. Well, my name is Shelby. I'm one of the directors over the pageant, so we're grateful that you guys were able to come, so we were there. Anyway, we appreciate your guys' support. It would not be possible without you guys, so thank you. But our queen, Miss Santaquin for this year is Ally Blake. First attendant is Mary Rickman, and then our second attendant is Arzadia Maestis. So, Ally, I'll come up and start. Hi, everybody. I'm Ally Blake, and my goal this year as Miss Santaquin is to help our community recognize that everyone is important. My platform is titled "You Are a Gift, So Be Present", and it focuses on the emphasis of life beyond the screen rather than behind it. And my goal is to help everyone recognize that they have creative outlets and that it's fun and exciting to discover them. So, I'm excited to serve, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary?
Hi, I'm Mary. I just wanna say thank you for this opportunity. I'm so excited to support Ally through her year, and I think it's gonna be a fun year.
Thank you. Okay, Arzadia, cheer shot.
Hello, I'm Arzadia, and I just wanna say I'm so excited for this year, and I'm so excited that Ally's queen and that we can promote her platform, and it's gonna be so much fun.
Good.
Thank you.
I would like to get a picture with you three with the council right here. Would that be okay? A whole bunch of ugly with us guys, and then all you girls can shine.
I can be the ugly.
Gosh, and how you standing in front with your collar and mostly. Not me.
That's what Keel's doing.
You tell them where to be. I'm just gonna take a picture.
That's right. Make sure they're facing.
Do you want us to be? Do you want me to?
No. No, no, no. There you go.
I can organize.
There you go.
All right.
We need to move further this way. All right, smile, everybody. Smiles all around. I forgot to suck candy. Thank you. Congratulations. The crazy photo with the council.
Yes.
Will cook burgers, will do everything to do. Thank you. Good. Thank you.
Can I take a few minutes for the chamber?
Right now would be the perfect time. I didn't see you sneak in.
I know.
State your name.
Stephanie Taylor, president of the Payson-Santaquin Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to say a few things. First of all, the hometown market, it went so well this summer. I think it was a lot of fun. I think there's room for improvement, so we learned a lot of things. I wanted to say thank you to Councilman Sitaway and Adcock that you guys were there almost every week, I think, every week. And so we really appreciated your support and being there, and I think there's things that we can tweak, but it was awesome working with Shawna Jo and the rec department, and so we're ready to do that again next year and make a few changes. But we'd love if you guys sent us your feedback or anything that you wanted us to know about it. But overall, I think it was a really good experience. Also, we are revamping our Business of the Month, so we are just gonna change to a Business of the Quarter. And the off months, we would like to recognize, we're gonna have businesses submit employees that they wanna recognize. So it'll be a balance. So any employees that are exemplifying their business's values, that those businesses will get to submit their employee's name. We think it'll be a great way to involve the community and kind of create a camaraderie there. And so, we'll still be here every month, but it'll look a little bit different. So the Business of the Month will be in December, the next Business of the Month. And then, we are looking for several new board members. We have several that their terms ending, and so we're gonna be looking for new, new members of the board, accepting any nominations. We're also preparing for our annual dinner in January. We, where Santaquin City and Payson City will have a table, so we hope that you'll join us, and we'll get that date to you guys as soon as we have that, so you can put that on your calendar. That's, we, we're changing the name. It's not gonna be an installation banquet. That kind of sounded vague. Nobody ever knew what that meant. So it's just gonna be our annual chamber dinner, so that way we get more members attending, and we look forward to seeing you guys there. And then, the last thing I wanted to say is we are coordinating with Sandstone Psychology up in Payson to offer free mental health screenings on October 22nd. It's from 9:00 to noon, so anyone can pop in during those hours at their Payson and also their Salem office. And they're offering that then, so that's all I wanted to say.
I don't know how to answer that. I probably am not, but what about Michelle? She sent us all a retirement.
Yes, so we are in the, her resignation, yeah. She's gonna start her own business, and she has some family needs that she needs to attend to as well, and so we're just, we just tweaked our, I guess, our job description ad that we're gonna be putting out there, and so anyone who wants to submit a resume can send it to me, stephanie@farmyardfresh.com, and we'll start that interview process soon and hopefully have someone in place for the new year. And Michelle's willingly, you know, she was nice to stay on until the end of December just to train that person, and so, yeah.
She's done such a good job.
She, she really has, so.
Yeah, we are sorry to see her go. She's been really awesome. Very, very nice.
Very best.
Yeah.
Stephanie, can you, is the mental health screening, is that open to the public?
Yes.
Could you forward us that information in an email, and that way we can post it on our website if you'd like us to?
What's the best?
What's the?
Either Jason or myself, you can get it to us, and we'll get it out there to.
They just sent over the details today, but we'll get those to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, just for accuracy, I think Dave was there a lot more consistently than I was, but thank you.
The mental health screening?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you to everyone, and to the mayor for coming to the dunk tank. If you didn't see that, you can go to our hometown market page and see.
Really?
There, there forever.
And what about the chili, and what about, you know what I really liked, too, was, was the bands and the people and the caliber?
Did an amazing job finding that music.
That whole experience, I think people would go in December and sit there. I really do. I, I was amazed, and, and such good talent.
Yeah, I think our plan for next year is to do fewer, so I think this, well, this year we went June through September, and I think next year it's just gonna be June and July. Once school started, we really noticed a decrease in attendance. It's just harder on. But, anyway, so let's do June and July, and every week we'll have a theme like the Chili Cook-Off or something fun to bring people in, and I thought it was just, and the Kid Entrepreneur, if anyone attended that one, that one was really fun and well-attended, so. Yeah, we'll do more, fewer and higher quality, so.
They were all good quality, good people.
But thank you.
I ate some good food there. I'm still paying for the chili. Yep. They handed a bowl out for every, every bowl of chili that you had to judge. By the time I got to the end, which was good chili, I think my tongue was starting to wear out. It was, but it was great, every one of them. I think all of us enjoyed that, so. Okay. Is there anything, anyone from the public would like to say? Just, there's only a couple here. Okay, we'll move on. Business licenses, building permits?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as you can see, we're up to 248 total residential dwelling units. That makes up 133 single-family and 115 multifamily, and we still have the two commercial spaces. Again, it's, we're, we're behind where we were last year, but still relatively speaking, it's, it's, it's a higher-growth year than, than 2019 and the previous years before that. We only have one business license to report today. It's a home occupation,
excuse me.
which is a carpet removal installation business owned by Joel Glas, so that's all I have to report unless you have any questions for me.
No, good. Any questions at all? Why don't we move on to new business, no, into resolution? We have a resolution which is contract for fire and 911 ambulance services. It's an inter-local cooperative agreement. We've had a, a changing and evolving contract with the county for many years, over 45 that I know of, so I know that there's a lot of good things that come of this. Have you read it? Are there any questions that you may have? Is there a comment, Norm, that you have on this?
No, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but this is just essentially an interlocal agreement that will help us to, to both service unincorporated areas of the county that are outside of our city and contiguous thereto, and also for us to receive payment for those services. Previously, the, the previous contract that we had within the previous interlocal only covered fire. They are now required by the state, the county is, to provide EMS and ambulance services. And so that, this, this contract now includes that with it as well, and will allow us to, to bring in that revenue on an annual basis.
That revenue is a significant dollar figure, and so it's, it's really quite good for us because we have so much area. I mean, we go 20 miles west and 12 miles out there. We go another 15 miles north, so we cover a lot of area, and we cover it with medic service. I, I think this is long in coming, but good to be here. Brett, did you have a chance to read through this one, or?
I did. Made a few minor suggestions, and I think those are gonna be taken care of.
Okay.
So we would ask for any motion on this for, if it's approved, to, to just include a final legal review of what we end up with with the county. We, again, we've, we've made some suggestions, and we're still waiting to hear back from the county on that. Nothing substantive, just basically wording and cleanup and other things that Brett has suggested for us to make sure that it's in, in line with what we need.
With that, I think we can move forward, unless you do have any questions that are outstanding with it. Yeah, I can tell you it's changed a lot over the years, but it's good to have this in here, and it makes such a dynamic difference to have the EMS part of it now, so. So with that, I would entertain a motion for adopting of the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 10-02-2022, a resolution of the Santaquin City Council to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement with Utah County relating to fire and 911 ambulance services within Utah County.
And with the approval of?
And with approval of legal notes.
Perfect. We've had a motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Seconded by Councilman Hathaway. Roll call, Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Passage unanimous. We'll just move straight into the reports of the officers. Jason, would, do you or would you like to report first?
Yeah, so just a heads up on, on some, some pending applications that are gonna be moving forward through different processes. Next week at DRC, we have a site plan submittal for a quick quack car wash. I know a lot of the public has seen a sign go up that it's coming soon. Nothing has been approved yet, so that is something that we're gonna be reviewing, that application, to see if, if it'll get approval and we'll move forward. So, nothing's been, been approved yet at this point, and, and it's just starting the process. We also have a traffic control device request for a stop sign. I guess there's a couple of them that are right next to each other on, on 200 or 240 West and 500 or 550 North. That's DRC. Planning Commission, we have two public hearings that we've noticed for. We have a, a concept plan for a three-lot subdivision called Heritage Heights. This is located up on the east bench. And then we have a public hearing for an amendment to code related to detached accessory dwelling units. If you remember, this was a topic that was brought up where the Planning Commission and council were interested in this topic. We kind of put it on the back burner for a little bit because we were, were addressing the moderate-income housing update that's required by the state. So that's, that's a ordinance amendment that will be coming forward. We also will, will be having an agenda item for the Planning Commission to review the proposed Tanner annexation, the concept of that and the zone, and the proposed zoning. This generally is not something that's required by the state of Utah for the Planning Commission to review. However, Mayor Olson directed that, he wanted to get the Planning Commission's review of that and recommendation before this comes forward to the city council for your consideration. So, those are things that are on the agenda item. We have some other things that are, are in the works that will, will be coming forward in upcoming meetings. So, I think that's, that's probably about it for now. That's all I have to report.
Norm?
So Mayor and Council, just a reminder that tomorrow starts ULCT for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. If you're not registered, we can still get you in if you're interested in going, and others will see up there. Also, our Columbus Day families activity that we talked about at the Red Barn, for them to take their families down, that will be on Columbus Day, and, and for you as well. I think you probably all got the email on that a couple of weeks back. And then, just a reminder of the Harvest View ribbon cutting, which will be at 4:30, two weeks from tonight, at Harvest View for the, for the pickleball courts, the, the, the new restroom, the parking lot, and that kind of thing. So, already getting heavy use. I've, I've been out there and seen quite a few people playing pickleball court at the same time that soccer, or, I mean, flag football games are going on, et cetera. So that's a great amenity for our, for our citizenry, and, and we appreciate that, getting that done, and the council's direction on that, previous, previous councils to, to move that forward and, and get that project done. It will be wrapping up here rather shortly and be ready for the, for the ribbon cutting on the 18th. I'm happy to answer any other questions, or if you have them, or what have you missed. Jason has some more items or another item?
I just, sorry, I wanted to report to the council. Last Wednesday, we had, it's the second time we've done this. We, we coordinated with all the other southern Utah County cities. That would be Springville, Mapleton, Spanish Fork, Woodland Hills, Elk Ridge, Salem, Santaquin, Payson, Genoa, La Goshen. I think I got them all. And we, we basically, and, and we had Utah County there as well. But we, this is the second year we've done it. We, we appreciate Payson and hosting it this year, but we had a Planning Commission training event. There's actually a state requirement now that the Planning Commissioners have to get four hours of training every year. They're able to, to get one of those hours by attending at least 12 meetings. There's also another hour that we encourage them by, by doing the, there's a land use academy training online, which I believe some of you have done as well, that, that they can do. And then we basically had this three-hour training event, and we had members from MAG and UTA that came and, and talked about, with a focus on, on transportation planning. So, we had almost our entire Planning Commission there. We had some of our staff there, and I think it was a really good event. We probably had nearly 70 or 80 people there, all South Utah County Planning Commissioners and, and that. And it was, it was really a great event. This was an idea, myself and, and, and other community development directors, we kind of came together and said, let's, let's combine forces to, to get this training taken care of, and it's, it's been, the first year Spanish Fork hosted it, and then Payson hosted it. I've agreed that next year we would host it. Obviously, our city hall will be done, and we'll have a space adequate for a group that size, but I think it was some great training, and, and, and it was, it was a really successful event. So I just wanted to let you know about some other things that are happening that, that has been beneficial to the city. Uh and and it was it was a really successful event, so just wanted to let you know about some other things that are happening that that uh has been beneficial to the city.
Emily, you went to a training up in Logan on recorders, would you uh just give a little report for a few minutes?
Few minutes.
Few as in one.
Yeah, I attended the the Utah Municipal Clerks Association Conference up in Logan last week and. Listened to a lot of really great motivational speakers, um Sergeant Taylor, who was was killed in Afghanistan a couple years ago, his wife was there. And it was it was interesting to listen to her and and her positive outlook, and I I I found that. Um inspiring and it was useful to to go to the breakout and actually get some. Training about the code and and some things that I know that I could do better and work on and. Recognize that I've only been a recorder for six months, so it's okay to not know everything, but it's exciting to learn new things and I and I appreciated being able to go. So thank you for allowing me to be out of the office that way to do that, so.
You were missed, I know that.
Well, and I was in Disneyland the week before, so sorry.
Okay, so you were missed twice.
But yeah, it was it was a great conference, I was glad to be able to.
Like to go through the council and uh just reports. Um on your assignments or anything else that you have, um Councilmember Montoya, should we start with you? And we'll go on over today, being the last.
Okay, so a few weeks ago, I attended the Trans Plan Fifty meeting in Spanish Fork, there were a couple of um others there. And that was a very good meeting with um, it was for our region. With the South Utah County communities and um and. Not only elected leaders, but city employees from those communities and UTA. And it was really nice to be able to give UTA some feedback about what our needs are. And look at regional planning for transportation, so that was a good couple of hours well spent. And um seniors are serving one hundred plus meals every week. And just, it's a great time to go and sit and have lunch with them each week and play bingo and visit and. Help serve milk and whatever they need, so um I appreciate the all the staff and the cooking staff. And everything that they do for our senior citizens. And the Library Board um has their meeting next week, I will be out of town, so I've been communicating with our librarian Jen Wagner. About that and what is going to be discussed at the meeting, um the Youth Council. In September had our annual um tennis and pizza night where we also held our elections. And our new youth mayor is Haley Lind, our mayor pro tem is Olivia Vincent, and our secretary is Dylan Thiel. So um super excited to work with them and they are also excited to learn and and contribute. Um service to our youth council and our community, members of the youth council helped with the Orchard Hills Fall Carnival. Last Friday, and they are also going to be helping with the teen night games hosted by. Santaquin City Community Services Department this Friday, so. There are other activities coming up through October, one just about every week, and they're gonna be, we're gonna be really busy with the youth and lots of. Fun fall activities going on, so.
Thank you.
The fire department's been trying to get a chassis to put our ambulance box on for probably a year. On the manufacturer's still not able to meet that need, but Chief Lynn has gone. Through a different avenue and procured a a new twenty twenty-two chassis. And hopes to have it married with the the box for the ambulance and and have possession by Christmas. So anxious to finally get that resolved and be able to retire some older equipment. The other thing I'd like to make sure that we as a our council and and the citizens in general are aware that starting Saturday. Uh until the following Saturday, uh the Santaquin City Cleanup will begin. And you'll have an opportunity to take those things that are accepted to the landfill, there'll be dumpsters there and. And you'll be able to help clean up the area, encourage people to do that.
Thanks, Art, Jeff?
I don't have anything this week.
Okay, then?
Me either, I'm good.
Dave?
Just a couple things, um and Norm can probably, I probably knows more, so I haven't been. Uh Norm, that Kim sent me an email that she still needs the. Executed Second Amendment and reinstated interlocal agreement for the. Joint and Cooperative Action created of Mountain Ebo Water Agency, have you got that from her?
I have never seen the original that we needed to bring before the board, so that's news to me that. I I I knew that something was potentially coming, but I've not seen anything from from the secretary at Ebo to to even be able to act on, so. If you'll maybe copy me on a reply to her and just say, hey, Norm's not aware of this, let's get it get it over and let's start putting it on a. For us to consider, cause at this point I've not seen anything, I've got it on my tracking sheet, but I I haven't seen anything from Mount Ebo.
Perfect. Uh the other thing is is that I I wanna thank Jason for signing me up for that. I haven't been here to report my, what I thought, but the transportation meeting we had over Spanish Fork, thank you, I mean, I I I appreciate it and. I've, it was awesome that me and Art got to participate in in I in. A really good discussion at our table, uh I kinda hope that some of that stuff actually goes forward, cause. Some really good stuff come from that, but other than that, I know that's a long-range thing, but I just, there's some, there were some good things there. Uh the only other thing I got is um we have a Community Services Board Meeting is on October twentieth.
Okay, well, I have a couple of things I'd like to give, and that is uh. First of August, they uh stopped the work on the canyon, uh phase two was not given to the contractor. And it went into a time period where the engineers will evaluate the costs, see what kind of uh. Uh equality they're coming up to in price and and uh the type of work that they're requiring up there. This has put it uh for a couple of months, I was talking to Senator um Owen's office. A few nights ago, and uh they have told me that they they were just on the phone that day, so it's been. You know, last last week, um but they were on the phone with um the federal highways who have. Now taken the first part of these evaluation numbers from the engineering side and. Uh they are starting to come up with uh, do they need to change the language? Or the award of the contract to maybe a different level, uh rather than small business minority owned or whatever. And move it up so they can finish the job, no matter what, they will not finish the Canyon Road until. Uh early fall next year, that's what they're stating, but they their hope is to be under contract by the first of. The year, so that at the first break, the uh. Even before high waters come, as far as they're concerned, that they they're underway with the contract, now what they could do. That's totally up to them and the contractor, but uh they are moving, they are aware, uh. We've made sure that they know that it's a failure and a failure on the federal part to fix the Canyon Road. Because it only gets worse, the longer they let it go, they know that, they know that if they're bidding the same thing that they've been bidding. Their expectation should not be any higher than it has been for the same last four answers, so. I think we've sent the message and I believe fully that uh we're gonna see some real action, I. I asked if there was any reason we should push them and make sure, and they said no, because at this point where they're at, they're ready to. Get the contract out and ready to bid, and uh their hope is to just have it up, go and gone and get this done. It's been a burr for them, so. We've made some good headway up the canyon on the uh mountain bike park, um Prospectors View and uh. It's, it is a lot of fun, I ride my bike up there and then I ride around and then I go hike and work on trails. And uh we have a uh corporate sponsor that is taking the bulls by the horns. And they're up there laying things out and it's fun to just go up and walk them. And uh so I go up and I take pruners and uh and a Pulaski with me and. I make sure that it's well understood where that's going, so the parking lot is really, really pretty close. We have a trail now that we have dug that goes all the way down to the bridge, um. We've got youth that will be there tomorrow picking up rocks and just throwing them off the trail, and that's the kind of uh. Uh volunteerism that we need, just youth that would like to go up and spend a couple of hours and. You know, you get twenty kids up there and they're throwing rocks, throw them downhill, that's all I said, enjoy it. You know what, uh everything that they do, they're adding to the value of this park, not only that they know it and will want to ride it, but we have. I'm now getting videos of where people are building trails up there and what they're doing, and it's it's kind of amazing. It's amazing that at nine months, this baby is born and uh. Next week we'll have toilets and uh, you know, it took Payson. Well over five, six years to get toilets, so uh we're moving very fast and uh. You know, it'll go into the winter and snow will fall and I won't even have to worry about a trail, but from now till then. Every spare minute I get, I try to go up, and uh it's not a cheap way to do it, but it's a fun way to do it. And uh I believe our youth are going and and old people like me are gonna enjoy this, I I just. Think this is a gift, a gift to the community, um there's a lot of other really good things going on. I promised you that I was meeting with companies and uh I continue to do so. And we are finding avenues and working on avenues to do the very best we can to open doors, and hopefully. After nine months, we're gonna start seeing some changes and help and hope and and uh there's so many good things. I it's just amazing to have gone to the Queen uh Pageant the other night. That was a lot of fun, if you missed it or if the community missed it, they missed, I mean, it mostly filled up the. The Payson High School's auditorium and uh which is kind of fun, because when I graduated from high school. That's all that my class was able to able to muster, to fill all of our parents up into that same auditorium, so. You know, times have changed, so um I appreciate all that you guys do and for the goodness you have. For the community at large, uh for the staff, the way that they've worked and continue to work. I do want to report that we are keeping track of every penny that's going on, and even in these troubling times. When we're looking at inflation and changes and building that's not quite the same as it was last year and a few other things that. We are at a point to where we're being responsible with the money of the citizens. And um I thank you for the trust you've given us, so with that. We need to go into an executive session that will uh and it. The explanation for this executive session is called to discuss the pending or reasonably imminent litigation and or. Purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, this is the only time other than a character professional. Competence that we can meet as an executive body, and I would like to ask for a uh. Motion to adjourn to an executive session.
So move.
Second?
All second.
Councilman Hathaway. Councilman Meacham. Councilman Sitaway. Councilman Adcock. Councilman, Councilmember Montoya. So with that, thank you all for attending tonight, we will excuse you, thank you very much. And uh we will close this or open this executive session at eight forty-four and.
Seven.